I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's one of the highlights of the entire year for all of us as we get to celebrate all of our wonderful students at the Early Childhood Center for doing A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. So I'd like to call up the director of the program, Andy Bernaby, to lead us through this and recognize the students.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to come tonight. It's one of our funnest nights of the year as well. It is also a little late for these little guys, so I'm going to try to go a little bit fast but still give them the recognition that they deserve. But before I do that, I also need to thank my home and school connection. They run this program. I'd love to stand up here and say I do it, but I actually don't. They do all of it. And we also partner with the Marlboro Public Library, and we do a lot of books online, which is helpful for those who don't do the books back and forth in the bag. So I want to acknowledge those two people, those two programs for helping us, so if we could give them a round of applause. Okay, so this year, we're going to recognize some of our younger students who are halfway to A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. So I'm going to start with them. Alex Fincham, can you come on up? Oh, he's not here. One of the ones not here, sorry. Lillian Parkhurst, come on up, Lillian. I'm going to get a picture, Lillian, come here. Megan Price, I don't think she's here, but I want to recognize her, Megan Price. Enrique Souza, who's not here as well. Valentina Vittorio. And Michael Willett. So if we can give them a round of applause. Some of our real younger kids can't make it to 7:30, so. So the students receive Reading A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. Logan Cato, come on down, Logan. You're going to get your name called, don't you? Logan Hoover. Jackson Rigney. Benjamin Luedis. Now Rebecca May is one of our younger kids, and she's already read A Thousand Books. So Rebecca, come on down. And one more who's not here, Jackson Oldman. So that's everybody. Do you guys want to try to get a group one like we usually do?
Yes.
Should we come up? How do you want to do that? All right.
All of you guys, come on up. Go right through to the table, okay? Come on up, guys. You must be nervous, Jack. The man is really nice.
Nice job.
Good job, buddy. Okay, you're going to turn around and look at mom. Everybody say cheese.
Cheese.
No, I figured that's what it was. Thank you.
All right, guys, come on over.
Is that what it is?
Want me to grab the chairs, Mike?
Thank you all very, very much for coming, and congratulations, and keep reading, kids.
Stay.
She's not going anywhere.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to all the parents, we will have the link live on our website within about a week if you'd like to share that with family members. I'd like to invite Julie Baker up to celebrate the K-12 Permanent Art Collection, the newest artists that will be put into the collection. And Ms. Baker, please beat that last one. Good luck.
I'll try. I don't know if I can. Well, thank you for having us here tonight to celebrate our permanent art collection. I have some members of the art department with me as well, and at least a few of our students are here, so we will celebrate them. But I want to give you a little background on the permanent collection. Not everybody knows exactly what it is. So the K-12 Permanent Art Collection was started in 2008 with funds provided by the Marlboro Junior Women's Club. Every year, the art department has selected 12 artworks to become part of the permanent collection. As a whole, we believe the collection is meant to be a sampling of the artistic achievements of our students and the visual arts program that we offer to our students. With permission from parents and students, the works can be reproduced and exhibited throughout our schools and community. We have a few framed from last year's permanent collection in this room, and if you visit schools, you're likely seeing frames like that with permanent collection pieces as well. The full collection can also be viewed on our district website. There's a link right on the homepage, and it's separated by tabs for the different schools. So as I announce each student, what I'll do is display their image, I'll say their name, and if you're here, I welcome you to come up. We have a little gift for you. All right, the first one representing Jaric Elementary School is by Julia DeAquino in Second one from Kane Elementary School is Garrett Ramsey, Grade Four.
Certificate for you, congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations, sir. Nice business with you.
Our third elementary artist is from Richer Elementary School, Hannah Langen, Grade K. Good job. Okay, now we have Whitcomb Middle School, Veronica Ramos, Grade Eight. A second one representing Whitcomb Middle School, Kira Dwayne, Grade Seven. Here we have a painting from the Hildreth School, Jonathan Escalante, Grade Twelve. And as we get into the high school images, what we try to do is choose images that represent the different types of media that we offer our students, so you'll see some different categories here represented. This one here represents our graphic design program. This is by Caesar Caban in Grade Nine. We couldn't choose just one ceramic piece, and we felt this project really is highlighted when you see a few of them together. So here we have three artists representing ceramics. From left to right, it's Shaylee Zudimul-Sick in Grade Eleven, Beatrice Nacimento in Grade Twelve, and Brandon Patano, Grade Twelve. Gorgeous landscape painting by Hannah Romaine in Grade Twelve. This is a photograph by Helena Juarez in Grade Twelve. A gorgeous dress created by Dominique Copeland in Grade Twelve. And this artist is here. This is a drawing by Brianna Bradley, Grade Twelve. So that is our 2019 collection, and again, I encourage everybody to look on the website if you want to see. There's, gosh, 12 times 11. That's how many images are up there. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to everyone. Mr. Superintendent, you can keep going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say congratulations to our class of 2019. Thank you to Tim Goldinger for being our student representative. Good luck on all your next steps, graduates. Please remember, your community is here to support you. Tim, good luck at UMass. Thank you. Make sure I got that right. Next, I'd like to just say thank you to Chris Dwayne and her staff from Boys and Girls Club for making the time to meet with parents and help them get ready for summer. Chris and I did speak after the bid award, and the Boys and Girls Club had given permission for me to ask Kizborough to run the summer program. I did reach out to Christine Rower, and Kizborough declined the opportunity to run the summer program. Unfortunately, there will be no summer care for the week of June 24th through 28th. As Kizborough stated, they will not run any summer care in Marlboro for the time being. So I apologize to the parents for that inconvenience. August School Committee Retreat Day. I would like to propose August 6th as the school committee retreat to further refine the goal around our redistricting effort, as well as continue to build a strong partnership. I hope this date works, and if not, we can propose a new date at the next meeting or at this meeting if it does not work. And lastly, our strategy for improvement. Our work next year will be focused on developing a multi-year strategy that incorporates as much of the information as possible from our entry plan, from our district review, and from all of our other sources of data on student achievement. As a leadership team, we found a framework for a strategy that we agree would fit our needs. I did include the link, but if you can't get there by the link, I also gave directions on how to view that strategy. Ours obviously isn't going to look exactly like theirs, but the framework is in a way that we thought it would really work for us. So that is going to be the major focus of our work next year, especially in the first four months of the year going into budget season. So that's my report for tonight.
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Questions from the committees?
When, so we should lock in that date? I mean, if people can't do that date, they should let us know you cannot.
In New York, the 2nd through the 9th.
So we'll have to decide, you know.
Happy to do another poll, and we'll see if we can't find a date in August that works for everybody.
Great, thank you. Ms. Murphy.
Nope, nope. Who's up?
Student services.
See what happens when I don't look at what I'm supposed to be doing? Come right out.
We're just trying to throw you off.
I guess you were. My fault.
Good evening. Marlboro Public Schools is focused on high expectations and increased student outcomes for all of our students. In addition, we're continually looking to improve increased independence and skills over time for special ed students, which includes becoming active participants in the IP process and transition planning for post-secondary goals. By regulation, special ed students who are 14 or older are required to be invited and participate as part of the IP team. This is an opportunity for districts to assist in teaching students self-advocacy skills and encourage students to be active participants. Research indicates that students who are successful, who are successful post-secondary are those who are supported to be meaningfully engaged in planning, assessment, IP development, their course of study, and service delivery during their transition years. These students can identify their strengths and challenges, understand that they can determine their path, have a vision for the future, and are involved in achieving that vision. Tonight, we have a presentation by a student, Ryan Boyd. Unfortunately, the teacher, Matt Sanko, was not able to make it tonight, but Ryan is here to be able to present to you a demonstration on student-led IEPs. Okay, Ryan, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Boyd, and this is my IEP presentation. A little bit about myself is that I am 20 years old. I attend the LIFE program, or known as Postgrad. My teacher is Mr. Matthew Sanko. I have a mild form of autism, and I currently have a YouTube channel that has over 2,000 subscribers, and I love making videos and editing them together. Filmmaking is my passion, and I would like a job in the area of that particular subject. I have experience in editing, filming, and also being in front of the camera. Someday, I would love to live on my own, near my parents. I would love to have roommates who can support me when I need help. I also would like to start dating and have a family of my own one day. And I've always wanted to travel outside of the U.S. One of the biggest is U.K., Europe. Some of my strengths is that I am very social. I am a very hard worker. I follow instructions. I like helping people, and a goal this year I did is that I now know how to do my own These things are very hard for me. Cooking is hard, handling stressful situations, eating different things, which is something I'm really improving on this year, and even remembering certain things. And some of the things I am working on this year is cooking, grocery shopping, and remembering certain things. Some of the life skills I've been learning this year is learning to use the grocery store, learning how to cook food and meals, and also working on money skills. Throughout this year, I've worked in many different places, including Christopher Heights, the Academy, Grace Baptist Church, the Hyatt Hotel, the hospital, and I even did a project this year where I made a bunch of kindergarten packets. As for my social life, I love listening to music, love making videos. I like talking to my online friends, including friends outside of school. I like watching TV and Netflix. On Thursdays, I go to Thrive, which is an amazing place, where I get to socialize with lots of people. And on Fridays, I go to Men's Group, which is every other Friday. Some of the goals I plan on working on is I would love to become an entertainer. I like to work with a camera. I also want a job, want to start dating, start a family, and buy an apartment close to my family and have roommates. And that is the end, and I thank you.
Ryan, can you tell the school committee a little bit about how, what you thought of this process and how this IEP meeting went this year compared to maybe a couple of years ago? Did you feel like you were better able to have a say in it?
Yes, I feel like I did really good this year, especially when I did my IEP meeting. Usually, I'm very, you know, shy with public speaking, but I feel like tonight, speaking in front of this audience, I feel very confident, and I feel very proud to have done it.
They might have some questions for you.
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee?
So, I have a question. So the process that you just went through with all the different topics, did you come up with those topics yourself, or is this, this is, does it follow the same as a regular IEP, like in the past, before you did it yourself?
I made up those topics myself.
You did? Okay, that's great.
Yes, ma'am.
Ryan, excellent job. Keep up the good work, and good luck this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mary, now, do you want to talk?
So, to start, on May 29th, the Marlboro Public Schools STEAM Integration Team, which consists of Kathy Rickoff, Tom Plati, Calliope Pentasopoulos, Joey Padilla, Cara Fisher, Eileen Barry, Allison Hathaway, Eliza Giroux, and Becky Murphy Van Cleve, presented key elements from their STEAM strategic plan at WPI. They also shared the implementation plan for the next academic year. This week, Kathy Rickoff, Tom Plati, and Calliope Pentasopoulos will also be presenting to the leadership team so that we all can be on the same page moving forward. Today, I shared with you the report that was, that's sent out today to all MEA members from the MEA Joint Professional Development Committee. Earlier this year, the committee surveyed all MEA members. Over 365 MEA members responded to the survey. At the end of the report, priority areas of focus were identified for professional development days and PLCs. We will be organizing next year's choice sessions around those priority areas, as well as any goals that are identified by the superintendent. As soon as I connect, the elementary, three elementary principals are here to give an update on the RTI pilot. So come on up. So throughout the year, we have been talking about, well, since December, a new RTI pilot that we've been implementing at kindergarten, and during Teacher Appreciation Week at some of the schools, we saw some of the transition going on. We wanted to just end the year with a final update.
Hello, everyone. Just to speak a little bit about the new RTI program that we've piloted in kindergarten. In the very beginning, Mary Murphy asked us to attend a two-day training. It was December 6th and December 7th, on a new model of RTI. And this model of RTI is something that Mary and Mike had the chance to see, I believe, their superintendent's conference during the summer. So we said, let's give it a whirl, let's check it out and see what this entails. So we went. We spent two days rolling around on the floor, crawling, tracking, doing eye-tracking exercises, but we emerged super motivated to implement this and see what we can do for our kindergarteners. We came back, we discussed it, the three of us, with Mary, how we can get it piloted in our kindergarten classrooms this year. So we sat down, we developed a plan, and we shared it out with our staff, and we took off from there. We broke up our students into Priority 1 through Priority 5 groups, is how they were grouped, shared amongst all the kindergarten teachers. RJ and Ron will speak a little bit more about how that process went during, but last week, over the two days, Thursday, Friday that we had, we had the opportunity to bring teams from our schools as well. And I believe RJ has the last slide, but, so he'll get into a little bit more details about it, but we brought teams together. We went down to Jericho Hill and got, they were all a part of the training as well, and when we got back, they're ready to start the school year going forward with it, so.
Can I just ask, can you just tell for the audience what RTI stands for?
Response to Intervention.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
So the during slide is mine. As a team, we then selected a time to begin, where we rolled things out, committing to an hour at each of the schools at our kindergarten level, which also included not only the kindergarten team, but also other staff, OT, special education, EL teachers, as well as paraeducators. The staff then shifted and were able to be sure that, although taking a leap of faith, that they were all in and all on board to try something new to further meet the individual needs of our kindergarten population. Throughout this process, Carrie Thurston, who is the consultant that we had been working with, had been extremely supportive. She put materials together for us. She helped us sort our students. She gave us her cellphone number. She gave us numbers of teachers who have done this at the kindergarten grade level in other districts, both in Massachusetts as well as in the state of Maine, to really build a foundation of support without anyone who was embarking on this process having seen her live ever. She sent a video, a clip, very brief, just introducing herself and her process, but with that being said, she was very much a part of this process, where none of our staff, as Calliope just said, had met her, Carrie, for the first time, which was last week. So we also had the opportunity to have, each of us had a day with one of her consulting partners, whose first name was Chris, who came to each of our schools for onsite support and to hear about what was working and to give us some tips as to how to move forward. The students were extremely excited for this. One particular example from Jaric was, the day that we began, it was supposed to start at 9:45, and I was able to leave my office at 9:47, and 160 kindergarten students were already in classes and doing some movement activities with the teachers that they were working with in less than two minutes, which was really exciting. And we all had, when Calliope and RJ and I talked about the all-in initiative and how everything went, we each had our own stories about how the students were so prepared and the teachers were ready, and the kids had a really good time. And as it says in the slide, the children were probably a little bit more excited and ready to participate than some of the adults. Throughout the process, parents were informed, we sent letters, we talked about what flexible grouping looks like and what the benefits of doing that, and that we weren't changing anything, we weren't disrupting anyone's learning, but that we were trying things differently to make sure that we met the needs of students better, and there's been nothing but positive feedback throughout.
So, the during slide is mine. As a team, we then selected a time to begin, where we rolled things out, committing to an hour at each of the schools at our kindergarten level, which also included not only the kindergarten team, but also other staff, OT, special education, EL teachers, as well as paraeducators. The staff then shifted and were able to be sure that, although taking a leap of faith, that they were all in and all on board to try something new to further meet the individual needs of our kindergarten population. Throughout this process, Carrie Thurston, who is the consultant that we had been working with, had been extremely supportive. She put materials together for us. She helped us sort our students. She gave us her cell phone number. She gave us numbers of teachers who have done this at the kindergarten grade level in other districts, both in Massachusetts as well as in the state of Maine, to really build a foundation of support without anyone who was embarking on this process having seen her live ever. She sent a video, a clip, very brief, just introducing herself and her process. But with, with that being said, she was very much a part of this process, where none of our staff, as Calliope just said, had met her, Carrie, for the first time, which was last week. So, we also had the opportunity to have, each of us had a day with one of her consulting partners, whose first name was Chris, who came to each of our schools for onsite support and to, and to hear about what was working and to give us some tips as to how to move forward. The students were extremely excited for this. One particular example from Jarek was, the day that we began, it was supposed to start at 9:45, and I was able to leave my office at 9:47, and 160 kindergarten students were already in classes and doing some movement activities with the teachers that they were working with in less than two minutes, which was really exciting. And we all had, when Calliope and RJ and I talked about the all-in initiative and how everything went, we each had our own stories about how the students were so prepared and the teachers were ready, and the kids had a really good time. And as it says in this slide, the children were probably a little bit more excited and ready to participate than some of the adults. Throughout the process, parents were informed. We sent letters. We talked about what flexibly, what flexible grouping looks like, and what the benefits of doing that, and that we weren't changing anything, we weren't disrupting anyone's learning, but that we were trying things differently to make sure that we met the needs of students better. And there's been nothing but positive feedback throughout.
So, where things stand now, there's a general sense of excitement in the kindergarten grade level. At Richer School, I've had a lot of teachers come up to me. Kindergarten teachers are proud of the accomplishments. It's been a short period of time. We've gone for about seven weeks at Richer School since we got this up and running. And already, they have some qualitative data and some anecdotal reference to successes with the program and the model. It's really a change in thinking when it comes to how we're addressing reading development with young minds. And you'll hear Carrie say a lot, settle the eyes, settle the brain, and that's the purpose of the eye-tracking exercises. And a lot of the movement exercises that Ms. Pentasopoulos refers to as the rolling around and the crawling have to do with exercises that will connect brain hemispheres or stabilize posture or cross the midline, and certain things that young minds and young brains need prior to absorbing information. So, this isn't something new, it's just something that we have a stronger emphasis on right now. And with Carrie Thurston consulting with us and providing us a lot of guidance on how to go about this mission, we're already seeing some, some fruits of that labor in a short amount of time. So, the excitement leads into a possibility to get this up and running in first grade next year as well. So, if we can, if we can arrange our schedules at the elementary level, certain ways so support can be available in the kindergarten grade levels, perhaps in the morning, and that same support can be available in the first grade level in the afternoon, we'll have enough people to, all hands on deck type of approach to get this accomplished, because it really does involve a lot of effort with the motor exercises, the eye-tracking exercises, and then the guided reading and remedial phonemic awareness and phonics exercises that are done as well. So, the structure of the model was surprising, surprisingly more attainable than expected. After the first training we went to, we, we were presented with a lot of information and didn't really know how to get that up and running, but we were also excited about it and invigorated from the experience that, we brought that back, and I think our staff kind of fed off of that and trusted us that this was going to be worth their while. So, it wasn't too long after that, Carrie Thurston was doing phone consultation with the groups, and eventually, the grade level teachers were able to meet Carrie last Thursday and Friday, as Calliope referenced, at the training we had at Jericho Hill. After that training, I feel like we're in good shape. We have some common expectations. We have a structure for the model, and I think we have a lot of excitement going into the next school year that we can do this right, and the result will be more proficient levels of reading at the end of kindergarten, with our goal being 85% of kindergarteners reading at benchmark or proficiency by the end of the school year. I think we're available to answer a handful of questions, or any questions, or...
Questions from the committee. Any questions from the committee?
You guys really lucked out that Hennessy's not here tonight.
We did. I didn't say that.
You were thinking it, though.
So, what are you trying to fill in?
No, I'm just trying to visualize, like, what exactly it is. So, it's exercise, so are these exercises and different techniques that you're putting the kids through prior to lessons?
Yeah, so, a lot of them stem from primitive reflexes. So, I'll give you some examples of them. I'm not going to demonstrate them. That would be far too embarrassing.
Calliope will.
There's positions that the children hold to sustain balance, and you'll quickly find that there's an area that needs to be remediated as a result of the child losing his or her balance in the position of an egg. They get down on the floor, and they, they fly like Superman, so they'll lift up their arms, and they'll lift up their legs, and they'll do the same position as Iron Man, where they'll have their arms behind them, and they'll lift up their arms and lift up their legs. And that's to help stabilize the body and activate the brain. The smooth eye-tracking pursuit is something that you do where you will gently grab the, or hold the child's chin and do a smooth, very, how did she describe it? You want to be very graceful in your, your tracking pursuit, right? So, you go slowly across, and the child will track back and forth, and then you'll go up and down 10 times, a series of 10 times, and then you'll go forward and backward. And you'll, you'll pick out that the child's eyes might skip, or there'll be some type of, of struggle for them to track that, the finger during the exercise, and that's indicative of something that needs to be remediated with their, with their eye strength. And once their eye strength improves, and they're able to consistently track back and forth without skipping or without straining, and you strengthen that, those muscles, then you'll see results with how, this is according to Carrie's model, with how they retain information. So, she will often say, like I stated before, settle the eyes, settle the brain, and then you'll get better results from instruction. I'm trying to think if there are any other exercises that really stood out to me. You know, I think that was the big one, is the smooth eye track. Oh, the lazy eights, that's another one. So, you have the children where they will do that figure eight motion, and they'll do different directions. They'll hold the utensil with two hands after holding the utensil with one hand, and to get them to cross that midline is a, is a major focus to get them settled and ready to attain information, retain information. Yes?
So, is this used as a tool for, like, classroom teachers to kind of refer them to specialists if they need it for the OTs or special education programs, or something like that?
Yes, so Carrie maintains that with consistent implementation of this model, you will decrease the amount of special education referrals as a result. So, we're planning on using this as a screening tool or additional screening measures in the fall when we do kindergarten screening to immediately identify students in kindergarten who need this remediation. And then through this model, that's an hour every day in kindergarten and eventually grade one. With that consistency, we should eventually see results, and one of those results will be a decrease in special education referrals and less of a need for occupational therapists or other related service providers to need to see kids in individual or small group settings.
So, can I just add? So, what RJ is talking about is we're talking about a model of instruction that deals with the whole child. And we've been looking at brain research for a number of years and how to increase the capacity of every single child. So, a couple of years ago, we had a keynote speaker that taught us about, what is it, dendrites?
Dendrites.
Yes, and how the brain works and how to create those pathways. And one of the things that the superintendent has been talking a lot about is the research in which reading instruction is based. So, it's not something that is automatic for students. There is, there's science behind it, and there's research. This is another part of the research that talks about building up the brain capacity at the same time that we're dealing with reading instruction. So, Carrie will talk about phonemic awareness, which we've always done in kindergarten, but she's asking us to look at it in first and second and, you know, beyond. So, looking at that in particular, the benefit, though, is, as well, is we have a number of students that are exceeding way beyond the ceiling in kindergarten, and we're able to track some of that data, too. So, we are moving all students forward at the same time, and it's, at the same time, it's engaged, students are engaged, and everyone is, and everyone's working as, as a team. It's very exciting.
And when you said all hands on deck, I mean, the amount of time that you have to spend to go through each individual child with this tracking, that's a lot of staff involved. I mean, so are, are you teaming, so you're teaming up with classrooms and doing groups of children at the same time?
Mm-hmm. So that she prioritizes the groupings where you have a certain level of need and a priority grouping of 1 through 6. It's 1 through 6, right? 1 through 6, yeah. And then you'll go from there. So, you'll have certain staff prioritize the certain groupings, and your priority 6 groupings are going to be more independent experience for the kids, but conversely, in your priority 1 groupings, you're going to have more staff typically in those classrooms, more groups of kids that have those exercises being gone through with them. And what I heard Carrie say recently at the last training we went to is if she could pick two exercises to really hammer home with each priority group, P1 through P6, but if time is a constraint, it would be the smooth eye-tracking and the lazy eight exercise. So, if you can do that consistently with each child in those priority groups, you're going to see results, according to her theory.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Can I just add one quick thing? I apologize. I wasn't in before the time limit. But I just want to say that I appreciate all their efforts, and if nothing else, the understanding that reading is a science, if we have nothing other than that, it's a huge win. And it, we can move forward and really design our instructional strategies around the science instead of other people's philosophies. And that's really the important thing for me, is just understanding reading is a science. There is a way that neuroscientists all across the world agree, phonics works. So, there's a reason that we're doing this, and I think we're going to see great results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Minutes of May 28, 2019.
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. Seeing none. MHS football preseason overnight trip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wazinski has once again asked the school committee for permission for the Panthers to travel to Eagle Hill. They've gone for the past seven years and spent a day practicing with Watchusett Regional High School. They've been invited again to stay overnight, as in past years. This will be the fifth year that they've stayed for the night. So, the recommendation is that the Marlboro High School football team be granted approval by the school committee to attend an overnight with Eagle Hill School on Friday, August 23rd, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The memorandum of understanding for the paraeducator contract had actually been signed quite a bit in the past. We do have the collective bargaining agreement here tonight to be signed, and I will pass it to the left. We've already accepted the MOU, so now the collective bargaining agreement just needs to be signed.
So, we're all set with that?
Just need signatures. Thank you.
Acceptance of donations and gifts. Life Touch Studios Early Childhood Center, $398.24.
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Reports of committees. Any reports of committees? Reports of committees, seeing none. Members forum.
Did Heidi get to review the warrant? She did not, so someone else needs to.
No one's getting paid.
Well, she has it, right? So, she probably can still review it on her own.
But I'll need a signature on the warrant before we release checks.
Who wants to look at the warrant? Anyone? Anyone? Sold!
I already do that.
You need to.
I know that, so I can't volunteer.
Would you be willing to read the warrant? You got, you have it electronically. And if you have any questions, you can address them with Mr. Diaz and sign off.
Just like that. We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Members forum. Any members want to be heard?
So, I'm still waiting for everyone's superintendent evaluation. Just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
Tim!
I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for this opportunity to be on the school committee with all of you. You know, as a, as someone who wants to go into education, I feel that a lot of my peers who are also going into education don't really have an understanding of how everything kind of works together. They know that they want to teach, and they know that they want to be someone's role model, but they don't understand how the education system works and how you kind of have to get into it, and how there's a lot more politics and a lot more bureaucracy than, than they would think kind of going into it, right?
Talking about.
Says the mayor. So, I'd just like to say thank you for kind of giving me a deep understanding of what the education system is actually like, because it's equipping me with the, with the skill that I feel that other people don't have going into this field. So, I very much appreciate it, and the lessons that all of you have taught me may not affect me right now or tomorrow, but they'll definitely affect me four years down the road, and they'll definitely affect my students. So, I appreciate everything that you guys have done for me.
Well, congratulations and good luck next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for your willingness to share with us. I know other, sometimes it's a little overwhelming to be in your position, and you have done it with a lot of grace, and I appreciate your opinions.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, take your sign.
It'll look great in the dorm room.
I'm just going to congratulate the superintendent for a great job on graduation on Sunday. To all the graduates, congratulations, and best of luck whichever path you take, but it really was a good day. It was a perfect day, it really was, so.
It was great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all the high school staff who worked really hard. Thank you for, for recognizing that it was a great day, but I kind of felt like I just showed up, and a lot of hard work went into that day. So, there's a lot of people specifically I could mention, but it was a team effort over at the high school, and I really appreciate how much thought and effort they put into that entire ceremony.
Thank you. With that...
Move to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Thank you very much.